I'll raise for the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, clerk. Please take us on to a roll call.
Counselor Tesh.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Vega.
Here.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Sandiget.
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Recubro. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Present.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Eleven present, you have a quorum.
Thank you, clerk. Moving on to memoriam's and celebratory resolutions.
Our first order of business, we have a resolution introduced by Council President DeJesus and all members of the City Council on the ceremony of the retirement of Edward Keefe after thirty-one years of service to the City of Chelsea. Whereas Edward Ned Keefe began his career with the City of Chelsea in nineteen ninety-three, working in the Department of Planning and Development. And whereas after assuming increasing levels of responsibility, Ned became Director of Planning and Development, serving in that role from two thousand and two through two thousand and eight, while also serving as Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And whereas in February two thousand and eight, Ned was appointed Deputy City Manager by then-City Manager Jay Ash, and continued to serve in that position under City Manager Tom M. Rosino. And whereas Ned served as interim City Manager during transition periods between three city administrations, and was appointed permanent City Manager by the City Council in twenty twenty-three, prior to the selection and appointment of City Manager Fidel Maltese. And whereas Ned currently serves as Director of Health and Human Services, which oversees operations in the following divisions: Aging and Independence, the Chelsea Public Library, Public Health, Recreation and Cultural Affairs, and Veteran Services. And whereas Ned has earned the heartfelt admiration and respect of City Managers, Department Heads, City Employees, City Councilors, and residents of Chelsea for his collegiality, dedication, positive attitude, and professionalism. And whereas throughout his career, Ned has played a significant role in countless projects that have greatly contributed to the socioeconomic development of the City of Chelsea. And whereas Ned will retire on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, after thirty-one years of service to the City of Chelsea. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council expresses its heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to Edward Ned Keefe for his thirty-one years of dedicated service to the City of Chelsea, celebrates the lasting contributions he made to our city over the course of his long career, and on behalf of grateful residents of the City of Chelsea, wish him many years of happiness and good health in his retirement.
Thank you, clerk.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Any speakers? Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Just want to congratulate Ed. His great, fantastic job. I know you're going to hear a lot of repeating words, so just want to get minds out first. I would just want to congratulate you again. First and foremost, your dedication to the City of Chelsea for those years. It was mentioned in this resolution, your professionalism, your attitude, your positive influence on me as a young City Council coming in. You came in in ninety-three. I think I came in in ninety-three also. We came in together. There's been a lot of collaboration, a lot of work. There's nothing that's been accomplished in the last twenty years that you haven't been a center part of, working with three City Managers and doing a great job, just guiding us in some of the tough times when one City Manager was leaving who's with us here today. You stepped right in and you kept that void filled. You worked with us as council members, eleven body member, different council members throughout. Your dedication and your commitment to the City of Chelsea. There, I can just go on. There was so many nights that I used to see just walking down. You know, and you weren't a Deputy City Manager at this time, but you were still here in the office. And when we were getting out of our City Council meetings, you were walking down. So I know that you was always attentive to what we were doing and what was going on to make sure if we had any questions, whether with the early planning stage that you did in economic development, that you were there for us. You just, I mean, just an asset to the city. And I just can't say enough, but I know all of my colleagues want to say something. But I just want to congratulate you publicly and thank you for your dedication and also your commitment to the City of Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. First of all, Ned, I would just want to say thank you. Remember when Ned first came to Chelsea, worked for Main Streets. Then he went over to Community Development and actually he ran the Economic Development Board, which I was a member of. When you look around the city, all these things that you see, from the urban renewal to all the new buildings, Ned had a hand in making sure that those things happened. And one of the things that people don't know, he was the person behind the four hundred. He met with Cheryl and I, and we talked about what kind of money it was going to take to kick off the four hundred. And he was able to figure out to put up a hundred thousand for us to be able to kick the four hundred off. So as you could see, he had his hands in many, many things. I just want to say congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes, I just also wanted to say a huge thank you to Ned. And as Counsel Brown said, your work ethic is outstanding. I live across the street, and I often wondered, who is in the office so early? Whose lights are on? When I would get up before school, and it was Ned's office. And then I would see the lights on at night, and it was Ned's office. So thank you so much. I think what I like most about you and working with you is that you're so calm. You're a consummate professional. And you just automatically make people feel at ease. You, anytime there's been any problems or anything I wanted to address, I just always knew that you would handle it in a way that was just so professional. So thank you so much for everything. And it is so exciting. Thirty-one years. That's like as long as I've been alive. How is that possible? But thank you and enjoy your time away from Chelsea. We'll miss you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Recubro.
Damn much I can say. The only thing I can say is enjoy their retirement. You did a great job. Now you deserve to do whatever you want to. And enjoy life. You did a good job in this city. Now go out and enjoy the rest of your life.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor.
So I want to echo everything that everybody said. But really, from the bottom of my heart, Ned, thank you for all these years of service. Chelsea's needed really good people like you to take us from where we were to where we are. And because you've done that, we'll be able to get where we're going. So I really do appreciate it. Counselor Sandiget's right. You're the consummate professional. I always appreciated that. And I know that, you know, when, not too long ago, when we had a problem with one of the families on Columbus Street, that they got flooded out. And it was a real problem and a real hassle getting these people taken care of and getting everything. Some of you in the audience remember it, too. But I, you stuck in there. You helped me. You helped everything get worked out in the end. And that's just one little thing of a million things that this guy has done. And it's really our loss that you're retiring, but it's your gain, because you get to enjoy the fruits of your labor. So really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. We really do appreciate all that hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garcia. Tenary Garcia.
Hi, Ned. Well, I think our counselors have said a lot, but I will miss the calmness that you bring to the City Hall. And always watching you work, always brought security to the city and a sense of safety. So I thank you for all your work, the thirty-one years. You were going to leave us prior to, but you stuck around a little longer. So we appreciate you very, very much for that. I still don't want you to leave, but I do appreciate that you're leaving in health and that you can enjoy the rest of your life, just enjoying life. And we thank you, Chelsea. Chelsea loves you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jimenez.
I know we haven't had the time to work together for too long, but I just want to, going off of what Counselor Garcia was just saying, I feel like when I first started hearing about you and your work, people were saying, he's retiring. And, you know, I feel like you've been retiring for a number of years now, and people just won't let you go. And it really has to do, because you've been doing so much good work. And, you know, we need people like you who know the city and who are doing really great work. So I just want to say thank you as well for everything that you've done over so many years. And I'm sorry we won't get the chance to work together for very long, but enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, seeing no other comments, I'll share that I echo my colleague's sentiments. I'm going to miss you. And just thank you for your years of commitment and dedication to this community. I'll ask one of my colleagues now to, we're going to go right into a roll call vote.
A roll call vote, yes vote to adopt the resolution. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recubro. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven members in favor. Resolution is adopted unanimously.
Okay, so I'll ask one of my colleagues now to please suspend the rules. We can suspend the rules, I think. Seeing no objections. Ned, would you like to join us for a few words?
You can say now.
Thank you. So as you all know, I would have objected if I had a vote in it. But in any event, I'm very pleased to have worked with so many wonderful people here and for so many years. And to work on behalf of our joint effort here, which is to improve the experience of living in Chelsea for the people that live here. So that the council so often teamed up with us, gave us guidance and direction, funded efforts that we wish to undertake, and shared our vision of where we wanted to go through several administrations. So the work between the council and the administration is so important for accomplishing, for making progress here. And so having alignment between these two bodies of government, between the executive and the legislative, is critical to all of us making a difference here. So thanks for bearing with us and supporting us and letting me do this wonderful job for so many years. Really appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so if I can now have one of my colleagues suspend the rules so we can proceed with some pictures and some gifts. Seeing none. Okay. All right, opening up the meeting, moving on to public hearing. And seeing nothing under public hearing, we're going to move right into public speaking. For anyone in the audience that is here for the public speaking portion, if you could please state your name and your address. And you will have four minutes each. If there are any testimonies that can be grouped because they're similar, please, we encourage you to do so, so that everyone can listen in to all the testimonies. So is anyone ready for a public testimony? Or? Yep, go right ahead. You can. There's also a sign-in sheet. If you If you can sign your name. Thank you. You have the floor.
Yeah. Okay. Hello. My name is Lizette Vasquez. Address is 129 Wellness Street here in Chelsea. Hello. My name is Lizette Vasquez. I'm a lifelong resident of Chelsea and a longtime member of La Colaborativa. I am here today to talk about the ongoing housing crisis occurring in our city of Chelsea. We, as an organization, have firsthand seen the impact of the community, and we are here today to request that you, our elected officials, help create change for a beautiful city of Chelsea. I have had many friends who have had to move out of Chelsea due to the rent increase. Their families are not able to afford the cost of living and are forced to move out. Some of my friends and their families have had to get two or three jobs to afford their rent, and this is something that is not new to our community, but it's not something that should be considered normal. Our community should be able to have access to affordable housing and affordable living. They shouldn't have to decide if their paycheck is going towards groceries or rent. A few years ago, a close friend of mine lost her home in a devastating fire, a tragedy that is becoming all too common. She and her family ended up in an emergency shelter, facing uncertainty, fear, until they found another place of living with help from La Colaborativa. Unfortunately, their new home was infested with rats, and the landlord refused to make the necessary repairs. After speaking up, their rent was increased, and soon after, they were evicted for being unable to pay. This heartbreaking cycle reveals our larger issue that our city, that the city's failure to provide lasting solutions for the residents. Chelsea's leaders must urgently address the need for affordable housing and better tenant protection. No family should be forced to leave their community due to circumstances beyond their control. Many of my family that grew up in Chelsea, their whole life, had to uproot their own family and move an hour away because their dream of becoming homeowners wasn't feasible here. We not only have to help the community with affordable housing, but also with a better path towards becoming homeowners. Today, you'll hear from many families who are afraid to speak up, but we stand together in support of them, making sure their voices are heard. Chelsea is experiencing a troubling rise in evictions, especially after the pandemic, leading to more homelessness and instability. Many families are struggling with the skyrocketing rents, often spending over 30% of their income on housing, while numerous rental homes face serious code violations that create unsafe living conditions, discrimination based on race, ethnicity, or income. It makes it harder for vulnerable groups to find affordable homes, highlighting the urgent need for better tenant protections. With limited affordable housing at risk due to new developments, we must protect what we have and create newly, create new, truly affordable options. As our community changes, it is crucial to prevent cultural displacement so that everyone feels at home. We ask for your support in creating meaningful change for your constituents, the people who elected you into office. You have the responsibility to build a Chelsea where families have a safe and stable place to call home. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Wenda Kocianowski, and I live at 221 Shirtlift Street. I'm going to talk about something a little different, but I'm just here to talk about some issues that are occurring in my neighborhood after, well, it's just some changes that have happened in the neighborhood that are affecting the people that live there. Again, I live at 221 Shirtlift Street. I'm just the next block, the next block over from 207 Shirtlift Street, which has turned into, or changed into housing, you know, transitional housing for people. And anyways, I'm losing my thought, but we've had a lot of issues in the neighborhood. And I appreciate that the police have increased their presence in our neighborhood and that they've made efforts to keep it safe. I know Councilor Santigate has worked with the police and with others in our neighborhood to keep it safe and clean and a pleasant place to live. Historically, this area has had issues with public substance abuse, vagrancy, and safety. I've lived in the neighborhood for almost 20 years. This is absolutely the most that I have been affected by these issues. There are people yelling, fighting, and hanging out at all hours of the day. They wake us up. We've had people panhandling in front of our house and having sex in the alley behind our house. People have urinated on our building for years, but now I've had the dubious honor of cleaning up human feces. The fact of the matter is, we now have a disproportionate number of people in a two-block radius in need of services. I am supportive in need, I am supportive of those in need getting services. Having had loved ones with substance abuse issues in my own life, I know that an integral part of their recovery was removing themselves from the community that enabled them to use. I have to question whether having large numbers of a vulnerable population in one area is helpful or a setup for failure. And before you think this is a NIMBY issue, I want to say that we've, for years, lived without incident, with transitional housing to the left of us and a group home to the right. I'm happy to support those who may have had a setback in their lives to get back on their feet and feel successful. What I am seeing in front of my house these days does not look like a success. Who made the decision to place so many people in need of services in the same block? What were the factors that were considered? I've heard this neighborhood now referred to as Mini Melnea Cass and the Times Square of Chelsea. That suggests to me a certain level of tolerance for the issues that we've been experiencing. Would you want these same things happening to your house where you live with your family? The recent assault on a police officer at 2:30 in the afternoon in the same area where a bus stop for elementary school children is should give everyone pause. Would you feel comfortable bringing your child to that bus stop?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just want to let you know you have one minute left.
Okay. Thank you. I know the police are working hard to keep us safe, and as I said before, I appreciate their efforts. But I have to wonder, are they truly able to do that with this current situation? As I've said before, I appreciate their efforts and those of Ms. Santigate to respond to our concerns. I often feel bad bringing these issues up with them time and again, because I know how seriously they take these problems and how hard they are working to resolve them. But I think this is a situation that is too large for one city councillor to handle. I don't know if my at-large councillors have been active in helping to solve this problem, but I certainly hope so. I'll be reaching out to Ms. Garcia, Mr. Jimenez, and Mr. Robinson to follow up about this. The lives of your constituents are being negatively affected on a daily basis. And I'd like to add that I also support affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hi. My name is Gio. I live in 24 Hurst Street. I'm Puerto Rican. I kind of know where to start, but oh. Just like, I grew up in Chelsea my whole entire life, most like, mostly like almost everybody here in this room today. We all seen a lot of messed up things. We all been through stuff, you feel me? But I just don't find, I just don't find it fair anymore. Things aren't, things aren't like how everything used to be back in the day. You feel me? Now it's harder for us to eat, it's harder, it's harder for us to live out here. Everything's more expensive now. And you feel me? My mom, she raised, she basically raised five kids by herself in one, in a three-bedroom apartment in Chelsea. I'm just sick, I'm just sick and tired of, I'm sick and tired of the violence and all the bad stuff going on around us. I wish this shit could really change for us. I'm scared for my future. I'm scared for, I'm scared for the future of my friends, too. Everything's, everything's more dangerous now. There's a lot of bad stuff happening in the city. One of my friends had an incident earlier behind McDonald's. There was a shooting, and my friend ended up, my friend ended up getting shot. That devastated me. I just wish, I just wish there was more police around. I wish, I wish everything was back the way it was. There's too much violence. That's, that's all I got to really say. We really need to make a change up in Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Anabetri Sperera Marais. I live at 423 Washington Avenue, Chelsea. I am a part of the Chelsea community. I am 17 years old, a student at Chelsea High. I don't necessarily fall in this category, but I know people who are affected who do fall in this category. And although they're not here tonight, I'm here to stand up and to support the people who do fall in this category, being evicted and struggling for rent payments, and also struggling with a lot of health violations, that the property owners be neglecting their own tenants' homes. And this worries us, even though our economy isn't the best, but I love to see people sleeping and staying safe in their own homes, not worrying about any health violations or having their rent raised out of nowhere for no reason. Chelsea is my home, a place that is my comfort, the place that raised me, and I refuse to see this place come to shambles. If at my age I can see that this is wrong, then at your age, it should be more obvious. Thank you.
Necesita intérprete. Si quiere, dilo en tu lenguaje y después lo traducimos en inglés.
Okay. Muchas gracias.
¿Ustedes lo traducen o yo? ¿Cómo se siente más cómodo?
No, está bien.
¿Cómo se siente más cómodo?
Eh, que te traduzcas. Muchas gracias.
So just, just for my colleagues, I was asking if he needed translation and how he felt most comfortable.
Muy buenas noches. Agradecerle a la Colaborativa por la invitación y al Honorable Consejo por este espacio. Mi nombre es...
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank La Colaborativa for the invitation and for this meeting.
Mi nombre es Gustavo Gómez. Llevo un mes viviendo en Chelsea.
My name is Gustavo Gómez, and I have a month living in Chelsea.
751 Broadway Street. Vivo con un hermano y dos personas más en el apartamento donde recibimos actualmente.
751 Broadway Street. I live with my brother and two other people.
Me he encontrado con una dificultad muy grande y es porque los costos de los apartamentos es bastante alto. Con las oportunidades laborales que los migrantes encontramos o los trabajos que podemos conseguir, hemos visto que con un horario de 40, 50 horas a la semana no nos alcanza para tener unas condiciones dignas de habitabilidad.
Uh, okay. Pérez, se ve muy por parte.
Lo resumo.
Vamos por parte. I found myself with a difficulty because with the amount of hours that I'm receiving, it's very difficult for me to find a habitable housing.
Entonces, en representación de los migrantes, quisiéramos pedir mayor acompañamiento para que se pueda regular unos precios justos y dignos para que podamos cumplir tanto con los, con los costos de los arrendamientos y que así pues también podamos darle un buen uso a los mismos, cierto? Necesitamos viviendas para vivir, pero también precios justos y dignos para poder tener calidad de vida y obviamente puede aportar a la misma comunidad de Chelsea.
This is long. As an immigrant, I'm here representing the immigrant community for us to be able to find a mid, like an understanding on our agreement on a just rent price, since it's very difficult for us to be able to afford a living.
No, agradecer nuevamente este espacio y esperar poder encontrar herramientas para que se regulen los cánones de arrendamiento y poder responder pues como con ellos.
Thank you so much for this space, and we will be, I mean, he will be more than willing to find if there's any tools that would be a measure for us to regulate the price, for us to obtain a just price on the rent. Thank you.
Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Freddy Matabueso. I live at 325 Commandant Way. I want to take you back to this time last year. I had a secure job, and my son was, what? Two months old, three months old. My wife was recovering from birth and being a new mom. And I was living a lifestyle that I did not know what it was like to live, was without my mom. My mom had passed away. And I started to live just thinking that my only nightmare was going to be not being able to supply, right? But it was never a reality. December of 2023, my contract at the place of where I was employed was not renewed. And I was told while I was on vacation, right? And the reality of not having a place to sleep became 10 times more real. And immediately, I was going through everything that you go through throughout that process. I thank Lena for helping me tremendously, Alex as well, Dini, Gladys, La Colaborativa in general, for helping me throughout that whole process. But there's only so much that that process can do. I found myself that I had maxed out on raft, and it wasn't because I put myself in a position where I simply chose to live in an expensive place, but the choice was mine to make to where I would live. And I was faced with a situation that I did not plan or anticipate. And coming from that point of view, I thank God that I was able to make it, and here I am today with some secured housing. But that whole process was extremely scary. And what made it even more scary is that in, on the legislative side, there's really nothing that protects me and my 14-year-old son and my wife to stop living in the streets. There is so much that it goes, there's so much that is, that has been there for years, but it's not enough, right? And so to the council, all I tell you is your constituents, we're struggling, and that's something that you already know, right? And I, and I don't come up here to try to make my problem yours, like, believe me. I'm a firm believer of, you know, picking yourself up from the boots and working hard and working hard to put yourself forward. But we're, we're in a situation where if we don't do something now, if you don't listen to your constituents now, and it's not just those that you might think it's because they choose that lifestyle, sometimes life hits you and you don't know how to get back up. And life is not expected to, to go the way that you planned it. So what I come to tell you is that not only are your constituents suffering, but I would like for this council to explore ideas on rent control, to explore ideas on living and having positive conditions, so that people don't have to force to, to rely on others, but can put themselves forward knowing that there is legislative meant to protect them, protect their families, protect their babies, protect their childrens, protect their families, because it's everyone's human right to live and to have secure living. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Beatriz Sanchez, and I'm here with La Colaborativa. I'll be talking about code violations and the uns- and the unsafe living conditions that we see all around Chelsea. Our community members are living in precarious living conditions. Residential buildings are being bought by private sectors for their own profit and then properties are left to decay into inhumane living conditions. The exceedingly high rates of mold are getting families, kids, and our elders sick. Our pediatric asthma rates are through the roof. Our seniors, who are already vulnerable with cardiovascular and respiratory illnesses, cannot be living in these conditions. It's unacceptable. We're here asking for justice, justice for our people and for Chelsea. We need healthy living conditions for our neighbors. They deserve reliable and equitable housing. This is their home and these people are what make Chelsea what it is. We will not stand for their mistreatment or displacement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brendan Mitchell. My address is 93 Turner Street in Boston. I've been working in Chelsea for a little bit over a year now. I'm also here today to speak on behalf of those that have recently been evicted from their homes here in our neighborhood. I've worked with a lot of members, a lot of community members from the city of Chelsea in my time with La Colaborativa. And do you know what they've asked me for? They haven't asked me for gentrified buildings or for more amenities in the residencies that they live. They've asked for a stove that works or rat traps or how to get rid of mold or why their children are constantly coughing, why their water tastes funny. And unfortunately, some people, what do they receive when they ask those questions? Some people, like people that have been getting evicted recently, only receive eviction notices. And so we're here today to fight against obvious inequities. The power imbalance between landlords and property managers and tenants is abusive. If landlords can sell their properties to the highest bidder and carelessly and heartlessly evict people from their homes, why do so many of our tenants in Chelsea have to pay rents for deplorable conditions that they live in? At the end of the day, our tenants are not being protected. And I think it's pretty simple. We're asking the council to prioritize the needs of the people, to prioritize the needs of the people of the city of Chelsea, to protect our brothers and sisters, our moms and dads from being thrown out onto the street without any protections. And together, we must stand together to ensure that everyone in our city has a safe, secure, and a dignified place to live. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Myriam Ramírez.
Good night, good evening. My name is Myriam Ramírez.
Tengo diecinueve años viviendo aquí en Chelsea.
I've been living here nineteen years in Chelsea.
Aquí vengo representando hoy, no nomás, a mis vecinos.
I come here to represent not only my neighbors.
Amigos.
Friends.
Conocidos que están por desalojarlos.
People that they are about to be evicted.
Okay, todos como estamos aquí sabemos que las viviendas en Chelsea...
Everybody here knows that houses in Chelsea...
No son buenas.
They are not good.
Vivimos con escases de todo. Todo está malo, las viviendas no sirven.
You're talking about the places now? The places where we live, they are bad, they are not in good conditions and they are super bad.
Y los dueños no quieren invertir.
And the owners, they don't want to invest.
Cada año nos van subiendo la renta.
Every year, the rent is going up, up and up.
Más no le invierten nada a los apartamentos.
They don't put anything on the apartments.
Estamos mirando condominios nuevos aquí en Chelsea.
We can see condominiums that are new.
Mi pregunta es, ¿por qué no vivir nosotros así?
My question is, why don't we live down there? Por qué no vivir ahí, no, los condominios? Why don't we live in the condominiums?
Sin pagar tanta renta.
Without paying so much money.
Las necesidades de nosotros son demasiadas.
Our needs are a lot.
Y los pagos de rentas ahora se están excediendo.
And our payment from our rent, they are going higher and higher.
Nosotros tenemos muchos años viviendo aquí y no queremos cambiar de comunidad.
We are living here many years, but we don't want to change of cities. We don't want to go to another city to live.
A mis hijos los cría aquí y no me gustaría irme para otro lugar.
I raise my kids here. I want to stay here. I don't want to change to any city.
Y le doy las gracias a la colaborativa...
Thank you to the colaborativa.
Porque ahora sabemos que no estamos solos.
Because I know we are not alone anymore.
Gracias.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Pedro del Moral. I am a rapid rehousing specialist at La Colaborativa. And in the last, I've been there for about six months now. And what I have noticed is that we have a major crisis of people getting displaced out of their homes, homes that they have lived for fifteen, twenty years, where kids have, where parents have seen their kids grow up and hopefully their grandkids too. And the major problem is that in the last six months, I have seen rents increase by thirty percent. And with no reason, with no improvements, with nothing to justify the rent increase. And I ask the city of Chelsea to enact laws that will protect those who are living in units that are sold to developers, to force the developers, the new buyers, to keep those tenants for at least three to five years. So they can do whatever they want with their properties, they can improve them, but the tenants stay for at least three years, five years. Something to give them the opportunity to continue living there as long as possible. That's it. Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Corina Salgado.
My name is Corina Salgado.
Y vivo en la 123 Addison Street.
And I live in 123 Addison Street.
Yo tengo cuarenta y ocho años de vivir aquí en Chelsea.
I've been living here for forty-eight years.
Aquí cría a mis hijos, fueron a la escuela.
I raise my kids. They went to school.
Cuando yo llegué aquí, la renta pues era buena porque no pagábamos mucho de renta.
When I arrived here, the rent was not bad because we didn't pay a lot of money.
Pues mis hijos estudiaron en las escuelas públicas y gracias a Dios pues ellos son, mis hijos son preparados.
So my kids, they study in public schools here and now my kids are very well prepared.
Yo doy testimonio de cómo la vida ha cambiado mucho.
I can testify how life changed a lot.
Porque esta semana mi hija agarró un apartamento.
Because this week, my daughter got an apartment.
Y le pidieron que diera de entre.
And they asked her to put as a down payment...
A ocho mil cuatrocientos cincuenta dólares.
Eight thousand four hundred dollars.
Y yo me pregunto cómo es posible...
And I asked them, I said, "Why is possible..."
Cómo un trabajador ganando un sueldo mínimo puede pagar todo eso de entre.
How a person who just makes and smits can pay eight thousand and four hundred dollars?
Porque aparte de eso...
Because besides that...
Les chequean el crédito.
They check the credit.
Y para las personas que no tienen crédito, es imposible que agarren un apartamento.
And for people they don't have credit, it's impossible that they get an apartment.
Aparte de que los apartamentos muchas veces no les sirve la electricidad.
La electricidad no funciona.
No, la cocina.
So even though if they get an apartment, sometimes the stove doesn't work.
Y hay cucarachas también.
And there are cucarachas there.
Entonces yo pienso, verdad, que si cobran bastante debería de estar un apartamento bien.
So if I think if they have to pay a lot of money, then at least I'm thinking, why is not the apartment in a very well condition?
Y yo pienso que debemos de estar unidos...
I think we should be united.
Para que haya un cambio.
So that it could be a change.
Especialmente para cuando hay niños.
Especially when there are kids.
Y pues nosotros sabemos que todo está caro.
And we know everything is expensive.
Porque no es solamente pagar una renta.
Because it's not only to pay the rent.
Hay que pagar billes.
We have to pay bills.
Y la comida.
And the food.
Entonces, yo pienso de que hay que unirnos para que haya un cambio en la renta.
I think we have to be united so that there must be a change in the rent.
Y le doy gracias a la colaborativa porque está apoyándonos, a nosotros que somos el pueblo.
Thank you to the colaborativa because they are helping us, us, that we are the people.
Y gracias a todos.
Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Patricia Evans.
My name is Patricia Evans.
Tengo treinta años viviendo en Chelsea.
I've been living here for thirty years.
Y pues mi corazón está y mi mente en esas personas que están queriendo sacar del edificio.
My heart and my mind are with those people who they want to be, who they are going to be evicted.
O las gentes que se tienen que mudar por el incremento de renta.
Or because the people who are leaving because the apartments are, the prices are going up and up.
Me imagino las personas que están en situaciones así que no pueden dormir por el incremento de renta, por no tener un apartamento, y otros porque tienen que mudarse porque tal vez están siendo vendidas las casas o los edificios.
I can imagine how they are going through because those people, they are thinking about if they are going to be, if they are going to be leaving the house or not.
Siempre he pensado que, siempre desde que vivo acá, vi que Chelsea lo tenían por la ciudad más baja, más sucia y ahora que Chelsea está más bonita, los ricos están viniendo a invertir y a sacar, a desplazar la comunidad.
Before, Chelsea was cheap and it was not clean. But now the rich are coming, are taking over the city.
Los ricos están viniendo a tomarlas. En los años 2006...
In 2006.
Que yo empecé con la colaborativa...
That I began with colaborativa.
Se vio mucha injusticia con la foreclosure.
There was a lot of issues and problems with foreclosure.
Nosotros con la colaborativa empezamos a limpiar las calles y a poner basureros en las calles para que las calles, la ciudad se mirara más limpia.
So we with the colaborative, we cleaned the city and also we put trash cans in the city so that the city could be seen very clean.
Ahora mi comunidad está siendo desplazada por los ricos.
Now my community is being pushed away by the rich people.
Y no es justo.
And that is not fair.
Chelsea es una ciudad latina.
Chelsea is a Latino city.
Merecemos un techo digno y seguro.
We deserve a roof under us, safe.
Le pido a todos los concejales...
I ask to all the councils...
Si pudiéramos trabajar todos juntos...
That we could work together.
Para ver si se pasa una ley de control de renta.
So that they can approve like a law, a renting law.
Para tener una vivienda digna y justa.
So that we can have something for our budgets and also something fair to pay for our rent from our houses, no?
I'm sorry, I think what she said was housing with dignity and justice. Mi amor, tienes un minutito, okay?
También podemos, como dicen, en la unión están las fuerzas. Cómo la comunidad puede unirse para evitar tanta injusticia, aprender nuestros derechos, cómo defendernos para estos ricos que están viniendo a desplazarnos.
So as the quote says, union is the power. So how can we juntarnos, no?
Sí.
Para desplazar, no?
Para no ser desplazados.
So how can we get together so that we are not pushed away by the rich people?
Buenas noches y gracias a todos.
Thank you very much and good night.
Gracias.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Paez. My address is 45 Chandler Street, Haverhill, Massachusetts, but I work as a housing case specialist with La Colaborativa. I have seen firsthand how detrimental housing instability and housing discrimination has been in Chelsea specifically for our community. Landlords discriminate against family compositions by denying units to families with young children and frankly have been openly discriminating against race and gender. With the absurd rent prices, families are left to compensate by moving in with friends and families. These restrictions imposed by landlords directly contribute to the increase in housing instability and the increase in evictions this city faces each and every day. The city must step up and impose guidelines to prevent these discriminatory practices from continuing. You must protect the community. Thank you.
Gracias.
Hi, everybody. My name is Daisy Gutierrez. I live in 105 Wintrop, Grover's Avenue, Wintrop, Massachusetts, but I grew up in East Boston, Massachusetts, and I work at La Colaborativa. I just started working here and in two and a half weeks, I've learned that I talk to people from all over, from all walks of life, including lawyers, construction workers, nurses, teachers. I talk to hard-working people every day. And I am the welcome specialist, by the way. So I am the first, one of the first persons you see, the other person's anais. But we see people from everywhere all the time. What I've learned in these past two and a half weeks is that we are all variables away from being homeless, evicted, or anything above. That includes all of us, myself, and all you. You guys are variables away from any crisis that you can think of. And I say this because, like I just mentioned... And I say this because, like I just mentioned, I've spoken to lawyers, construction workers, nurses, teachers, all hard-working people and intelligent people at that. So my call to action for you all, city councilors, Fidel, is to stabilize the rent. So rent stabilization, I know it's been done before in the '90s. Let's open up that and think about it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Herman Olivares. I'm a case, well, my address is 28 Pleasant Street in Revere, and I've been working for the Collaborative for that past year. So as a case manager in Chelsea, I witness daily the profound impact of high rental costs on our community. Many families express struggle to afford basic necessities and how significant portion of their income is going towards their rent. This financial strain leads to heightened stress and anxiety affecting overall well-being day in and day out, affecting their overall well-being day in and out. I see families facing tough choices every day, whether to pay the rent or cover essential expenses like food and healthcare. The threat of eviction looms large, and I frequently assist families navigating these housing securities while helping them find hope when it seems lost. The high cost of rent also displaced long-term residents. Many families are forced to leave their homes due to evictions, fire, or skyrocketing rents, disrupting their children's education and severing community ties. These challenges not only affect individual families, but also weaken the fabric of our community. Every day becomes clear that addressing housing affordability is critical for fostering stability and support for those we serve, and I would hope the city councilors would consider some type of rent control for these families. The struggle that I see every day that I take home, I always ask myself if there was more that I could have done, and I don't think that's fair to me, especially to the city managers and the people that work here. I don't think that I should burden all that myself every day. I see that every day, and I feel like these people are human, just like everybody else. So I would hope there was some type of rent control and avoid some displacement of these families. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and members of the community. My name is Kamala Zarconi, and I have the honor of working at La Colaborativa. I do not live in the community. I live at 75 Beacon Street in Lowell, Apartment 2. Yes, I have lived in apartments most of my adult life. Many of them have been substandard places. Many of them have been owned by landlords I have done battle with. So as we talk about this housing crisis, it is one that I look upon with not just concern, but also empathy and firsthand understanding. And I guess I just wanted to speak tonight to ask all of the council members to do what you can in terms of putting more teeth in your enforcement efforts. A long time ago, I learned a saying back in journalism school. Early on, one of my professors said to me and to everyone in the room, "Your job as journalists is to afflict the comfortable and comfort the afflicted." And I guess I would just put it to all of you council members that as leaders of our community and as members of government, I see that as your job too. So please do what you can to hold these landlords accountable. They're certainly not going to police themselves, but I'm glad this is America and you as government members have a chance to do that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Mietria. I work at La Colaborativa. I've been there for almost two years now. I am the triage manager, so whenever there is an emergency in Chelsea, it always comes through our doors, and we're more than happy to be there to serve our community. In my role in the past two years, I've also seen the housing landscape change tremendously. When I first arrived at La Colaborativa, Raft assistance could cover up to $10,000 in rental arrears, moving costs, or utility shut-off assistance. In my time at La Colaborativa, that has now shrunk to $7,000. Already, when it was at the $10,000 mark, it was a discussion with a family on whether or not right now was the right time to max out your Raft application in case you did fall behind on rent in the coming months, in case you weren't able to pay an electricity bill and face a shut-off. Now, $7,000 can't even really help towards the moving costs, not for apartments in Chelsea. Over the past month, I've had families move into a one-bedroom apartment going for $3,600. $3,600 times the four months that it costs to move into an apartment isn't going to be covered by a Raft application. And while I understand that's a state policy, I also have had such an honor working in the city, seeing how much support that there is from the city council, seeing how involved local government is with the lives of people. But there's still so much more to be done. I ask you today to be leaders in your community, to protect your most vulnerable. Today, we are here representing the voices of those who can't be here because they have to work two or three jobs to survive. City council meetings, while effective for those who have time, might not always be effective for those who are working to put food on the table. I'm so honored to be able to work at La Colaborativa, a place where we can be that voice for folks. But I ask, what would happen if we didn't exist? Rents would still be high. Families would still be struggling to put food on the table. And I would hope in that situation and in that case, we would have a city council and a city manager coming up with their own legislation, coming up with their own plans to support their community. Thank you.
Good night. My name is Gladys Vega. I live on 116 Clark Avenue in the city of Chelsea, and I'm the president of La Colaborativa. First and foremost, much gracias to all the case managers who are here telling the stories of the people who don't speak. So first, I want to say thank you to the case manager. They spoke about the stories that they hear from the people that are here that are not willing to speak. Speaking in situations that have to do with your housing condition is extremely hard. We're putting people in the most vulnerable way exposed. They have been intense when they testify here and they give their address. Landlords hear that they're saying those things, and they get in trouble, they get evicted, or they get a rent increase. So that is why we decided that we want some of the case managers to speak on what they hear every day as they're hearing the voices of the people. I want to make sure that you understand that I would love actually to encourage any one of the city councils to visit La Colaborativa. Sit in the triage room, hear the stories of the people. We see from 300 to 500 people a day, and the vast majority of the people that come to La Colaborativa, they have an issue with an eviction, or they have an infestation of mice, roaches. And I think the biggest issue that we have is that landlords know that at times they can get away with a lot. And people say all the time, "Well, you live in overcrowded condition. They bring so many people in." That story, please do not use it with our tenants, because the landlords are giving permission to people to be able to rent, because now they're renting rooms for $1,500, the landlords are. So this excuse that we look for those situations ourselves is absolutely not true. The fact of the matter is that landlords have come to the city of Chelsea because they know that there's a housing crisis, that they can sort of like increase your rent, and if you don't like it, they immediately will find the next person in line that has that application. Or they have, you know, situations like the Martita situation, where when they purchase, and I wouldn't be surprised, you know, if something happens like this with one of the buildings that we work in with the landlord, Mike Benning. The situation, for example, is when Martita bought, when they bought her apartment, immediately it was okay for the rent tenants to stay, and immediately, 30 days after, they increased their rent to $1,000 with no repairs, with nothing. I urge you to please make sure that the apartment, the building complex that we're working with, that situation never happens again. When we have large apartments or small apartments, let's come together to figure out how we're going to address housing code violations. If I pay for a rent for an apartment, it must be free of housing code violations. At La Colaborativa, we just don't protect tenants. We teach tenants also how to maintain and prevent evictions. So we're very tuned in that reality, that if we behave, if we pay the rent on time, let's not get evicted. Let's not do anything that calls the attention for an eviction. But that means that we expect not less from those landlords that, and I truly, truly would urge you to come to La Colaborativa, see our database. Sort of like our database system doesn't lie. It has all the numbers. It has all the cases. And the vast majority of cases that we have at La Colaborativa are housing issues, and it's related to housing code violations. I think that our Department of ISD must continue to expand, must continue to do an enforcer, an enforcement job. I think that we need to pass a policy that if you don't have good standing in the city, you don't do business. You don't continue to expand like Mike Benning. Why would he continue to allow him to do luxury apartments when he's not able to take care of the tenants? That is insane.
I'm sorry, Gladys. You're running out of time.
I'm sorry. It's okay. So much gracias, pero por favor, let's create something together for Chelsea where people don't mess around with the tenants, with the most vulnerable people. And once again, we don't teach people how not to be good tenants. We do that. We tell them how to be responsible because we have to take preventive measures. Much gracias.
Hi, my name is Catherine Palencia. I'm at 1005 Broadway. Honorable members of the city council, I want to emphasize that I'm speaking to you as a lifelong resident. Like many Chelsea residents, I've endured many trials and tribulations. Through my experiences, I've witnessed firsthand the need for a community center to provide a safe and inclusive space for our residents. Additionally, I believe that self-defense classes at our police station could empower our community members and help us feel safer in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay, for anyone who is their first time testifying... For those who are here for the first time, I just want to clarify where the agenda doesn't allow for us to get engaged in a conversation immediately after all you have shared, but please do not think that that means that we are not caring. It's just the way that the agenda goes. Okay? We are now moving on. Yes?
Madam President, I would like to move out of order the resolution number 24167 on ensuring accountability and property management, under unanimous consent if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Well, we have a resolution introduced by Council President De Jesus regarding ensuring accountability and property management, whereas it is the responsibility of the Chelsea City Council to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of all residents of the city are protected. And whereas numerous incidents have been reported of landlords, particularly larger property owners, neglecting their tenants and allowing properties to fall into disrepair, leading to unsafe and deplorable living conditions. And whereas smaller landlords who invest time and resources into ensuring their properties comply with city inspections are unjustly held to a higher standard than larger property owners, creating an imbalance in the housing market. And whereas the city of Chelsea has a responsibility to ensure that all residential property owners follow the law and maintain habitable and safe living conditions for their tenants. And whereas rewarding landlords who fail to meet these standards with new development opportunities, licenses, or business ventures is in direct conflict with the city's values of fairness and community well-being. Now therefore be a result that the Chelsea City Council goes on record to express support for the following policies. Number one, the city shall establish a good-standing policy that ensures only those landlords who pass thorough inspections consistent with city ordinances, uphold reasonable housing standards, and maintain a history of responsible property management will be eligible to apply for and receive new licenses, permits, or business ventures. Two, no landlord not in good standing with the city of Chelsea shall be granted any new development opportunities, including permits for construction, expansions, or any property development, nor will they be granted business licenses, including but not limited to liquor licenses, until they bring their properties up to code and resolve all outstanding tenant complaints and violations. Three, uniscible inspections shall be applied equally to all property owners, ensuring no disparity between small landlords and larger property owners. And be a further result that the Chelsea City Council commits to working with the city manager and all relevant city departments to draft and adopt the necessary ordinances and policies, ensuring this good-standing policy is enacted within this calendar year.
Thank you, Clerk. How does the council wish to proceed?
Madam President, I'd like to motion to approve by roll-call vote, and I'd like to speak on it. And actually, a question for the clerk. Can we approve and also refer this to a committee? The resolution? Okay. So I'd like to move to approve by roll-call vote and then refer this to the Housing Subcommittee.
Okay, moving on. Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll-call vote.
I'd like to speak on it.
Yes, you have the floor.
So we've heard tonight about mice, about stoves that are not working, heat that's not working, rents that are out of control. I've heard myself about people who get told that they should, you know, they're going to have their rent increased because they have a kid now, which is highly illegal, yet it happens every day in our city. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who came out to speak today about this critical issue. Thank you for being impatient. People, we can't be patient, right? This is happening day in and day out, and the people can't live this way, so we need to do something about it. So I'm fully supportive of what's in this resolution. I know we have specific large landlords in particular who have been and continue to be a problem. We absolutely need to do what's in this resolution and more. I've already introduced a proposal for a real estate transfer fee that would generate funding for us to support further affordable housing development. We've had conversations with the Housing and Community Development Department about options that we have, given that, as was mentioned earlier, that so much housing policy is held up by the state legislature, preventing us from making good policy here in Chelsea. So in particular, landlords get to ask you for everything when you want to go rent from them. I think that it's time that we actually do more to increase transparency about landlords, to make sure that, you know, the landlords aren't taking advantage of people, as they clearly are in many cases. So just thank you to everyone. Thank you to the councillor for introducing this. I will be voting in favor of it and looking forward to working with everybody who was here, both on any options that we may have, small as they may be here at the local level, and also on any of the work happening outside of the city to make sure that Chelsea and everywhere else gets fair housing across messages. It's, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Taylor.
Sorry. So I want to say that I believe that this is actually a very important issue and a big problem with us holding bad landlords accountable. I wholeheartedly agree that no one should have to live in an apartment where the stove doesn't work, or where there's rats, or any kind of, everybody, every single landlord needs to be held accountable for the condition of their property. No question about it, and I will be the first one to lead the charge in order to hold bad landlords accountable. I will say, and I will vote for this. I think that a good-standing policy, I'm surprised we didn't have it already. I think, I think most cities do have it. I know that for my business to operate in Boston, although I'm moving it to Chelsea, I have to have a good-standing policy. I had to have paid my taxes. I had to have, you know, not have any outstanding complaints or anything like that. So this is just, I think, a common sense measure that should be adopted unanimously, I believe. I think that this is a complicated issue, and so what a lot of the folks might not understand is that the city council only has so much power to do things, and that you need to please go and advocate at the State House, talk to your state representative and your state senator about state policies that can address some of the other problems that you're talking about. Because the problems that a lot of you were talking about, we are unable to do anything about at this level of government, okay? And so I just want that to be clear. And so I just want that to be clear. It's not that we don't care about, about people. I think every single one of these councillors up here cares about people. And we want to help everybody in the ways that we can. But some of the things, I think, that you, that were talked about tonight, we are unable to do because that is not our role. Okay? But it is important to be part of our democracy, to advocate for what you're talking about with the people that can actually help you. And that is your state representative and your state senator. Right? And even at the federal level, call your, call your congresswoman, call your, your two U.S. senators. That's how democracy works. So I will, I will vote for this. And, and I would say that one other, one other thing about the landlords in Chelsea, and that is, we have, we have a couple huge companies that own a lot of units. I don't think it's the best idea for just a few companies to own so many units. And so I think that there are ways where the, where the city can try to address and try to get people to divest some of their units. And, and we should be able to try to encourage more homeownership opportunities for people. And I really do think that this is really an important part of really making the American dream possible. And especially for people in an immigrant city. You know, it may not, we may not be able to do it for everybody, but if we can do it for more people, that's, that's better. We do the best we can. We can never fix all the problems. But I think that this is important, and I'm committed to helping resolve some of this and holding some of these people that really don't care. We got to make them care. And, but we got, we have to have better tools to work with because we can find people, but, you know, these big companies can just pay the fines and that's all we can do. So you gotta, you gotta, you gotta also complain upwards. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Tanayri Garcia, and then councillor Recubro.
I want to thank everyone for showing up today, all the case managers at La Colaborativa. I worked for two years for this wonderful organization, and I know the heartache that you go through every single day. It's a tough job, and I thank you guys for taking on that role. I also want to mention that this good standing policy is a policy that our madam president and I have been very, very close to, and obviously everyone else. But I remember during the pandemic, we moved people personally, bagged everything up, who were being evicted. And we were wondering why was the city continuing to do and doing business with the city and weren't fixing huge problems? For instance, I went to an apartment where the tub was literally falling into the basement, and they had increased their rent, and they were ready to be evicted. So I know very closely what you guys go through on a daily. Just know that we are in full support of our pueblo. We are in, we should be responsible for making these landlords responsible for, for creating better homes, better living conditions for our residents. So I just want to thank you guys. I know it's late. I know it's a weekday. We appreciate you guys and the work that you do in the community. So thank you.
Councillor Recubro.
Thank, thank all of yous for being here. But I'm going to give you a little reality check, okay? There's not much this council can do, like this councillor said. There's been, this ISD's, I know for a fact, they gave a certain landlords $50,000 worth of fines. And what happened was, they appealed it to the courts, and the courts throw it out. So no matter what you say, it doesn't matter how much ISD can do. And as far as people being displaced, it's, you're not going to stop it for one reason. They sell in these houses, and average people cannot buy them. So corporations are buying these houses, and they do not care. The only thing they care about is making money. If you really want to change, maybe up to us, we should promote more affordable homes for people to buy them and stay here and create a community, which that's not happening now. So we have something, maybe we do have a tool, and maybe we should apply the tool. Instead of having all kinds of housing, have housing to people to buy, and they can stay here. That's the only way. As far as anything else, like my fellow councillor says, you go to the higher up. But remember, what rules this world? Money. Money rules. So it doesn't matter. All kinds of stuff, you can come to us. We sympathetic to your cause. We go through what you do. You think it's easy for any of us to live in this city? It's just as expensive for us. But how do we stop it? Can we stop it? No. Can we try to change it? Maybe. So what can we really do? It's good that you come and you express your voice, but maybe your voice needs to be to the higher up than us. Maybe it needs the whole system, the way it's structured, it's not in favor. Look at this state. Look at the statistics. People are leaving the state faster than they're coming in. Why are they leaving? Because you can't afford to live here. But what are we going to do? We can't do nothing. What can we do? The only thing we can do is try to help. That's what we got, we, we'll try to do. But I don't know how much we can do so. We're not going to lie to you and tell you. It's great that you come up and you express your feelings. That's the feeling of all of us. And I wish we could do more for you. But that's all we can do. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for you coming, and I hope maybe we can help yous.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kelly Garcia.
Buenas tardes a todos. Sé que nosotros hemos hablado mucho hoy. Simplemente le quiero decirle, decir que... Bueno, mi español es no muy rico, pero voy a tratar. Muchas gracias a los case managers que vinieron hoy para contar la historia de la gente que está pasando por una injusticia de vivienda. Y te aseguro que este concejal aquí tenemos muchas nuevas caras que nos prometemos ayudarlo a cada uno, a visitar a La Colaborativa, a ver los casos reales, y también al bocar al nivel estatal a trabajar con nuestro senador y nuestras representantes estatales para seguir ayudando y apoyando a nuestra gente, a nuestro pueblo. Gracias.
Thank you, councillor. I'll ask now my VP if he could please just give me a few minutes to share some words.
I also want to speak.
One second, guys. I'll be right back, I promise. Muy buenas noches. Primero que todo. Gracias. Muy buenas noches. Primero que todo. Full disclosure, trabajo para La Colaborativa. No en el departamento que me he pasado muchos años con que es la vivienda, pero sí trabajo en La Colaborativa. No tengo ningún tipo de conexión con los fondos de la ciudad. First and foremost, I, full disclosure, work for La Colaborativa, not in the Housing Department, which I've worked in for many years, but I do work at La Colaborativa, and I have no funding ties to the city. I just want to share a few words. My colleagues have said it all. I think that this is another one of those moments where I think to myself, wow, here we are. We haven't voted yet, but here we are, potentially voting unanimously again as a body for the people, for the voices that we're hearing. And that, to me, is one step forward. The fact that we can have these conversations, that we can talk about the realities in the community, that we can focus our energy and our time in the real issues that are happening in the city. And I just want to share that, as my colleague Tanayri was mentioning, this is not something that happened overnight. I was working on this prior to my seat on City Council as we went into the homes of many families and supported them and saw the realities of what our families lived in. Esto no pasó de un día a otro. ¿Verdad? Esto, como mencionó mi colega, esto pasó hace años atrás cuando nosotras no estábamos aquí como concejal. Estábamos en el pueblo organizando con los inquilinos, ¿verdad? Y vimos las realidades de lo que vive nuestra familia, de donde duermen nuestros jóvenes, ¿verdad? De dónde están nuestras mamás, dónde están esos padres que trabajan dos y tres trabajos y llegan súper cansados a acostarse debajo de una mesa, a acostarse en un closet, a acostarse en un cuarto con cinco o seis personas. Right? And, and so this is a reality that for many years, our students, our children go home to sleep in these overcrowded apartments with mice and, and housing code violations that our parents that are working multiple jobs, right? Getting home tired to sleep under a kitchen table that they're renting, going to sleep in a pantry, going to sleep in a bedroom that has five or six individuals renting. It is out of control, but it's also not fair that the only ones held accountable with some type of consequence are the tenants. In these situations, the landlords wash their hands, and there's no consequence whatsoever. It's only the tenants that end up in the streets. It's only the tenants that end up with the hardships and the traumas. And so we need to, with this commitment and this ordinance, make it clear that we are going to work hard to make sure that there is accountability on all ends. That the small landlords that are doing good are also not bearing the penalties of, of having to come up with the money to make the repairs because they know it's, it's inhabitable, because they care for their tenants. They're, that they're not the only ones that are thinking this way, that these large property owners that are able to do it, do it and take it seriously. These are human lives. It's, it's inhumane, the things that we are seeing. And, and I commit myself to continue to be present, you know, in the recent fires, our city manager and, and myself, and, and some colleagues have, have visited. But we're there. We show our face. We're there with our families when they're displaced. We're there with our families when there's a fire, when there's a crisis. But we need to now do more here, right? When we come back here, we need to do more. We can't just allow these things to be on paper. We have to make sure that these things translate into action. And this is something that we've been talking about as, as a body since last year, December, when some of you were not even in office and you would show up and listen in to see what was, what was in the works, right? It's time for us to take action now. And I think that back in February, as we listed our priorities, this was loud and clear. We have an opportunity to push this forward. That's it. Thank you.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Again, thank you, folks, for being here tonight. Thank you for your testimony before this party. We hear you again. You've heard some of my colleagues. I somewhat differ from some of my colleagues on what's being said. It's, it's really somewhat nerve-wracking to hear this. And as our former speaker just stated, this is something we've had a conversation about last year, but we have yet really, we've yet really took any bite into it. There's, there's many things we could do here. I mean, let's be real here. I mean, you folks come up. You, you folks tell us about the real stories that we're unaware of. And every time, and it seems though we have a few things here. One, we have is that there's evictions going on. Second, we have that there's deplorable situations and, and living habits. And thirdly, and it seems like the most important thing we want, is that there's landlords, certain landlords, just doing certain things and getting away with certain things. And I know we here as a city, we work so hard with our ISD department, Mike McIntyre and his team down there. We have annual, annual inspections to go out to, to try to diffuse these problems that we hear, that we heard here tonight. Just very briefly, because I don't want to waste your time, I do want to say I appreciate you being here tonight. You know, we have these hearings where folks come in and they want to, you know, buy buildings and convert buildings into certain units and do certain things. And if everyone that came here tonight would appear before one of those license commission meetings or one of those public hearings about, hey, do you know that this landlord here that is proposing these things here tonight is a landlord that had evicted 17 folk? Whatever the numbers are, you got the data. Not only that, the conditions that his properties are. And now from, I think I heard today, now they try to say, oh, look, we're going to have a management company, so we, they won't point the fingers at us. So you have to be able to, you can do this. You can come to these hearings. And when you testify as you have tonight in front of these hearings, it gives these folks that don't normally see folks to show up there an idea of, well, maybe we should stop, you know, and listen to these folks. Because a lot of folks cry for housing. So when we get opportunity for housing, guess what we do? We pass legislation, and we allow them to build. Later on, folks get in these houses, we get all this concern. So that's the first problem. We have to make ourselves available at the root of the issue and stuff, where folks and families will be living in these buildings and, you know, sometime they come under the margin. We want to give you just barely what we have to with the city. The last part of this resolution, and we're voting on the resolution. The last part of the resolution makes a lot of sense. It says that the City Council commits to work with the city manager and all relevant departments to draft necessary ordines. So if they're necessary, that mean we don't even have them. So literally, we adopting something tonight that we really don't have. But we do it to show that we have a commitment, but our commitment has to be met with your commitment. Because again, some of the council members, we go there when we have things that we want to see on the agenda. But a lot of us don't go there for housing matters because we hear the cry about housing, and we know the fluctuation and the money that causes. But we try to get housing in here. We did it with the MBTA, you know? We want the, you know, the silver line, but on top of that, we want the housing also. So we did that to try to make more affordable housing, and it's not always affordable. And if you were able to pay this amount, $18, $19, $2,000, you shouldn't live in those conditions. And we should have documentation. We should make sure that every tenant understands that there's an annual agreement, and there's certain speculations that they have to be met. I look forward to the hearing and what we need to do. But we want, I want to be honest with you. I think you need to be more diligent in these hearings where these, especially if it's not all landlords. I hear from some of the tenants that it's the same old landlords who get away with it because no one policed them. Now you should be the police of them. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson.
Yes. First, I just want to thank you for coming here to share. I will come and visit the organization. I think it's important that we, I want to make an amendment to make sure that we invite the senator and our state representative because all these actions should be taken place on a state level. But we can advocate for those things to happen. I think it's appropriate for them to be invited to this conference.
Anyone else? Proceed to roll call vote. The request was for a roll call vote. And for clarification, the request was to move to Subcommittee on Housing and Community Development, correct? No objection. Roll call vote requested, yes, vote to adopt. Councillor Tej.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Vega.
Yes.
Councillor Tanayri Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Santigat.
Yes.
Councillor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Councillor De Jesus.
Yes.
Councillor Cooper. Absent. Councillor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten members in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Resolution is adopted.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on.
Next item on the agenda. We have approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the City Council dated September 9th, 2024.
Madam President. Motion to accept and file the minutes for the special and regular meetings of September 9th unanimously. If there are no objections, that's items 24M31 and 24M32.
Seeing no objections.
Move on to communications from the city manager. We have a communication received from the city manager requesting approval of appointments to boards and commissions. Dear councillor-
Madam President. Motion to waive the reading. Just read off the individuals and send this to a second reading. This is a new, new appointments. Yes.
Uh...
Objections?
No objections.
For reappointment to the planning board, Sarah Rich of Chelsea, and appointment to the cultural council, Mr. Armando Rivera of Chelsea. Both move to second reading. We have a communication received from the city manager requesting council acceptance of Barr Foundation grant to the city of Chelsea. Dear councilors, I am writing to request the necessary council action to formally accept a grant award of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Barr Foundation for the North Suffolk Office of Resilience and Sustainability.
Madam President. Motion to waive the rest of the reading. There's an item coming up later under new business. If there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Moving on, we have another communication from the city manager regarding an update to opioid settlement fund. Dear councilors, I am writing to provide...
Madam President. Motion to waive the rest of the reading unanimously. If there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Accept and file under communications.
We move on. We have a communication received from the city manager responding to Council Order twenty-four, one forty-nine, free cash usage. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to Council Order twenty-four, one forty-nine, requesting that the city manager provide an update to the city council on how much free cash has been expended since January first, 2024.
Madam President. I move to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file the communications. There are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Seeing no objections. Thank you, Counsel.
Moving on, we have another communication from the city manager responding to Council Order twenty-four, one fifty-four.
Madam President. Motion to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Moving on.
We have a communication received from the city manager responding to Council Order twenty-four, one fifty-six, conducting a study for traffic flow optimization in the state of oneways. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to City Council Order twenty-four, one fifty-six, requesting that the city manager conduct a traffic study on the state of one-way streets in Chelsea.
Madam President. Move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communications. There's an item coming up under new business.
Seeing no objections. Thank you, Counsel.
Moving on, we move on to communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from Chelsea resident Grace Lee regarding community programs in the city of Chelsea and the success of the recent Chelsea Five K Road Race. Dear members of the Chelsea City Council, as a longtime resident of Chelsea and an active supporter of its community programs, I am writing to acknowledge the exceptional leadership of B. Cravata, Director of Chelsea Recreation and Cultural Affairs. The recent success of the Chelsea Road Race, a large-scale event that was well-received and widely enjoyed, prompted me to express my appreciation for her ongoing dedication to our city. B. is not only strategic in designing and implementing initiatives that have consistently seen success and strong participation, but she has also excelled in forming partnerships and building relationships with other organizations and nonprofits. Her mindful collaboration has allowed for the effective coexistence of various community efforts, ensuring that Chelsea's families receive comprehensive support in a wide range of enriching programs. Her influence in these efforts is truly unmatched, making her a valuable and integral part of the city's ongoing growth and success. Over the past decade that our family has been participating in community programs, she has led numerous initiatives, from seasonal celebrations that we all look forward to, like Halloween and winter holiday events, to sports and educational programs. B. has demonstrated a deep understanding of the unique needs of Chelsea's families by crafting tailored programs that provide enriching, accessible opportunities for all. These initiatives have not only enhanced the lives of my own children, but also offer countless families access to activities that foster learning, well-being and a strong sense of community. Her dedication, passion and strategic approach have left a lasting positive impact on Chelsea, benefiting residents of all ages and backgrounds. I am deeply grateful for her commitment to making our community a better place for all. Thank you for your time.
That they do in our community and also for the benefit of our whole community. So thank you for your time and appreciate reading it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Can I just give a quick shout out to Eduardo, who also did a lot towards the Five K race? And to all the members of the community and counselors that made it. It was a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on.
We have a communication received from the Assistant Parking Clerk regarding the September tenth, 2024, meeting of the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Yeah, if I may, I would like to move the agenda item number two. It's in regards to the bus stops that are being proposed. Actually, I met, had a meeting with some of the businessmen from the community. Also met with the city manager today. Some of the businessmen would like to come in, speak to the council in regards to their concerns about where they're proposing to do the bus stops. They're not against the bus stops, but they want to have some input or suggestions where it might be.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no objections.
The motion was to move Agenda Item Number Two to Subcommittee on Conference.
Yes.
And regarding the other agenda items, was accept and file?
Accept and file.
Please bear in mind that council is required to act in the affirmative within thirty days of receiving. If council does not act to vote or reject, it is construed as being accepted. So council has thirty days to accept or reject.
Counsel Jimenez.
I guess I would just wonder why, like, I'm happy to have a conversation with the business owners and everything, but I just, I don't want us to hold this up. I think it's really important separately. I think that we need to really have a conversation more broadly around parking and traffic and how they're thinking about bus lanes. Really, you know, right now Everett has approved Spruce to have a bus lane up until the Chelsea line. The Parking and Traffic Commission denied the remainder of that street to have a bus lane as well. So, you know, we really need to have conversations, make sure that we are in lockstep with, you know, our surrounding communities to make sure that this all makes sense. Just because the, you know, the city line is, you know, in the middle of a road shouldn't mean that we just have a bus lane. And when we really do probably need it, this bus lane is for the new one oh four route. We need to make sure that these new traffic patterns are effective so that we can more effectively move the number of people that we have now in our city and in the broader region, rather than sticking to, you know, the old systems that we had. If we don't approve these type of things, the projects that we have put into place like the new one oh four will not be as successful. And, you know, so we really are, we need to set ourselves up for the best position to be in in the future. And I believe that by denying this bus lane, we are not doing so. So I just want to make sure that we are really pushing parking and traffic to think more broadly about these things, rather than, you know, just being reactionary and deciding that they're not going to do it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. So I think it's, I'm in favor for the public to speak or the business folks to speak. I mean, again, this is a new proposal, a new lane that will be created. Whether it works in our favor or not, I understand what the state is doing. We're all aware of what's going on. They're trying to get less cars off the street, but still, the impact on the, especially coming down in Admiral's Hill, that's part of my district, so I want to be aware of it. And also hear what they have to say and also what the parking, the parking department is proposing. I don't see anything wrong with holding it up and giving it a little thought. I think the city manager has put some really good thought into it and I know others have looked into it. And, you know, if the council at large want to get a chance to hear the business, I'll be more than happy to be at that meeting and hear also. Because again, it does have something to do with a part of the city that I represent. So, out of fairness and...
Move on. We move on. We have a committee report received from Counsel Taylor regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Ways and Means held Tuesday, September seventeenth, 2024.
Thank you. So there were, there were three financial orders discussed in the Ways and Means Committee last week. The first was Order twenty-four F ninety-three, which transferred, which was the transfer of fifty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, seventy-four cents from projects initially appropriated under prior year capital improvement plans to a current year CIP project, which was the DPW Vehicle Acquisition. Deputy City Manager Mason has directed departments to conduct an accounting of outstanding CIP projects to determine if funds remain or were fully expended. Projects totaling five point six million dollars have yet to be fully vetted to determine the status of potential existing funds that we can reuse. The second one, the second order was twenty-four F ninety-four, authorizing departments to pay for prior year expenses, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty-six cents from the city clerk for floor mat decal work for a police vehicle. The invoice was sent electronically and not found in time to increase the purchase order amount before the cutoff period. Eighteen hundred dollars from Human Resources for outstanding bills for public safety hires, medical exams. And then the third financial order was twenty-four F ninety-five, which was the appropriation of eighty-nine, eighty-nine thousand, eighteen dollars and twenty cents from Special Revenue TNC Surcharge Distribution Fund. The state charges the surcharge of twenty cents for every ride booked through a rideshare service with funds distributed back to municipalities at a fifty percent rate based on the origin of ride. Funds are used for roadway repair and to mitigate the increased number of vehicles on the road. And that's it for the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
We move on to second readings. We have a copy of a communication received from the city manager requesting approval of appointments and reemployments to boards and commissions being read for the second time. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section four...
So Counsel Recupero is putting a motion out for a roll call vote? Seeing no objections?
And to waive the rest of the reading?
And waiving the rest of the reading. Okay. Moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counsel Otesch.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor. Counsel Vega.
Yes.
Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Santiget.
Yes.
Counsel Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven members in favor, zero opposed. Appointments and reappointments have been approved.
Thank you, Clerk.
We move on. We have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws, the sum of fifty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-four cents, representing unexpended portions of projects appropriated.
Seeing no objections. Moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counsel Otesch.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Vega.
Yes.
Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Santiget.
Yes.
Counsel Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero.
Yes.
Counsel Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven members in favor, zero opposed. Order adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four.
Madam President, if we could waive the rest of the reading and move to a roll call vote.
Seeing no objections. Moving on.
Yes vote to adopt. Counsel Otesch.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Vega.
Yes.
Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Santiget.
Yes.
Counsel Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero.
Yes.
Counsel Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, zero opposed. Order adopted. Our final second reading. We have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of eighty-nine thousand, eighteen dollars and twenty cents.
Madam President, if we could waive the rest of the reading and proceed to a roll call vote.
Seeing no objections. Moving on.
Yes vote to adopt. Counsel Otesch.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Vega.
Yes.
Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Santiget.
Yes.
Counsel Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, zero opposed. Order adopted. Move on to new business. First item under new business, we have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars on the general stabilization account to FY twenty-five DPW Streets and Sidewalks, professional and technical account.
Move to the Ways and Means Committee, please.
Seeing no objections. Thank you, Counselor.
Moving on, we have an order introduced by Council President DeJesus. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference be held to discuss the timeline and framework of future committee meetings related to traffic and parking issues in the city of Chelsea.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Adoption and anticipation under suspension. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections.
Like to speak on it?
You have the floor, Counsel.
So this was what I was talking about at the last meeting. We want to involve all of our residents in the city to have a say in constructing a more comprehensive parking plan that's unique to every, every district. Not all the districts are the same. We have different problems or different, you know, configurations in a lot of different traffic patterns in different parts of the city. And there, there's, you know, more parking in some areas than in others. So I think it's important that since, this is one of the issues that all of us constantly hear about, is the lack of parking in Chelsea and what we're going to do about it. This was one of our prior legislative priorities. And I think it's time that we tackle this. So we will be having a Subcommittee on Conference to deal with this and subsequent meetings held in every district of Chelsea so that the residents can come out and, and let us know exactly. This is your chance, folks. You've got to come to, come and participate to these meetings or else we don't want to hear any more complaints about parking and traffic. This is your opportunity to let the government know what you want. And we're going to try our best to do, I think, what's best for, for everybody. We all live here. We all recognize that this is a problem. And I think this is the first step to really fixing a lot of our, a lot of our problems that exist here and trying to mitigate kind of an inherent problem. We're, we're a lot of people shoved into a very tiny space. So this is your chance, folks. So please look for the announcements of where and when the meetings will be and show up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Brown.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I'll be quickly. Think it's very important. Again, we have so much to consider here. Again, traffic is what we're trying to get rid of here. But, you know, the order before with the MBTA proposals, we have to make sure that we know what's going on. And I think it's, we need to lean on the city manager to keep us abreast. As my fellow colleagues said, all, all districts are quite different. So when we have these meetings and stuff, we have to understand that, you know, six months from that, from that day, there could be a meeting for new housing projects to going up or new tracks is going up down on Second Street and Vale Street. There's a lot of things going on and we don't want to overburden any one community with the existence of not having enough parking[1703.28] the existence of not having enough parking and, and alleviate some of the parking we can by the, the work with the MBTA and also with the Silver Lion expand. And we know it's coming. We also know proposals coming for twenty-five thousand seat soccer stands. So, that's going to be another draw. So, we have to be aware of these areas. That's why I think we tentatively need to take a, a step, a hard look at this and, and make sure that we're aware of these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no other comments, moving on.
Next item under new business, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the Traffic and Parking Commission approve the installation of a speed bump in front of one forty-five Essex Street.
Adoption and suspensions and objections?
Seeing no objections. Thank you, Counselor.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager ensure all requests for information submitted by the city council to city departments are responded to within one business day.
I'd like to amend that to three business days.
Okay, Counselor Recupero.
I'd like to amend that to three days.
Seeing no objections. Actually, Counselor.
Just a point, point of information. When we pass orders here, we have to wait forty-eight hours in case somebody wants to ask for a recall. So, it won't fit into the time that he's looking to do in, in three days.
Three days, forty-eight hours. Three days is longer than forty-eight hours.
All right, I'm going to ask our clerk to please guide us with this one.
In terms of council approval of orders that are requests to the city manager, that's correct. Council has a forty-eight hour reconsideration period, so matters don't get referred out of the council office until Wednesday. But in terms of requests for information, which is, I think, what the language states, requesting information from the city manager doesn't qualify under reconsideration, but anything coming out of council as an order does.
So, I'm, I'm only asking that because I want our clerk, if we ask him something, to get a reply within an amount, a certain amount of time that he can furnish it to us. Because sometimes, speaking to the mic, yes, speaking to the mic. I'm requesting this because of our clerk. He should have more access to whatever information we ask for and he should be, so when we call him, he would have information for us. He shouldn't have to go back and ask information all over again. He should already have it. You know, and for us too. I might ask question to the clerk and he might not be able to get it from me right away. He might have to wait. So, doesn't, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with three days to furnish something that we ask.
Okay, Counselor Jimenez.
So, I, I guess I, I, my question to the counselor is, it says that the city manager will, will ensure that these requests are, are responded to, but then he's talking specifically about the council clerk who the city manager, I believe, does not oversee because we oversee, right? So, I just, I just want to make sure that we have an understanding of what it is that this order is asking for.
Let, let me rephrase it.
Counselor, hold on. Through the chair, I just want to make sure that we don't spend too much time on this while we may have to go back and rewrite and have some conversations behind the scenes and potentially.
If I rephrase the way, what I'm talking about, then we might be able to clarify what I'm saying. It's simple. If we ask, the only thing I'm asking for is a simple thing. If we ask, if I ask, let's say, to the city manager, this is what it is, right? And he should reply within two days and then say, this is what it is, or three days.
So, I think because, because I think there needs to be more conversations, Counselor, maybe we can table this and then come back with another motion if that's what you.
Certainly, certainly, certainly. I got no problem with that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. So, motion withdrawn? I mean, sorry, tabled. My apologies.
Yeah, tabled, that's fine. We'll talk, do it again.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Thank you. I understand the spirit of what the council is saying, but again, we're, we just had this big, you know, discussion about housing and now parking and stuff. We just can't be taking our resource and, and try to get personal things done, you know, within three days. If, if we start telling the city manager and his staff to do certain things, it takes us away from what we really want to do with the housing issues and with the parking issues. So, I think, let's be a little more courtesy of what we're asking. Thank you.
But we're not asking anything personal.
Okay, Counselor.
We ask.
I just want to make sure that we're all going through the chair, please, okay?
Chair, can I speak?
I, it was already tabled. You were in agreement with it, Counselor.
Right, but I, something was said that it's not the right thing. Like, you know, it's nothing personal. If a council asks, it's not personal. It's city business.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next order. We can have more conversations after the meeting.
Next item under new business. We have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager create a program in which Chelsea homeowners age sixty-five and older who reside in their home only pay zero point five percent in property taxes for a period of twenty years.
Adoption and suspensions and objections? I'd like to talk about it.
I object to the unanimous. Counselor can speak.
You may speak, Counselor.
Okay. I don't know if this is possible. I asked if it is and I didn't get a clear answer if it is or if it's not, but.
Is there, I'm sorry. Let's interrupt real quickly. So, there is no speaking. Your motion was for the Counselor to speak?
I don't object to the first reading. I'm objected to the unanimous consent. Therefore, we can now have a conversation about it. I just don't want it to be unanimous. I.
So, we can do it on a roll call vote?
And, and I would like, I think we need to have a conversation about it right now and then decide what to do.
So, why don't we have a roll call vote?
Okay, so, is there a motion for a roll call vote?
Yes, can I speak on it?
Yes, no objections. You may proceed.
Okay. I asked this question before and I'm not sure if we can or we cannot, to be honest, because the answer I, I got replied, it didn't specifically say we can't and it didn't specifically say we, we, we could. But here's the, I have, and the issue is, we always do everything, but why not help the old people? Why not help? You want to keep people within your city. This order only says if we can. We're not taking the taxes. We do it for businesses all the time. We give a twenty, thirty-year TIF to everybody, but when it comes to the old people, nobody wants to give them anything. Why? Why don't we want to help them? Don't you want to keep and promote the old people to stay in their homes? This doesn't say you're not taking the taxes away from them. This only says they can increase the tax a little bit at a time, and that's if it's possible, you know? There's nothing wrong with all of us trying to help an old people. All of us someday will get old. But the point is, I'm not exactly sure if I can or what I, if we can't. That's up to the city manager. If we cannot, he said, he tells us we cannot. And if we cannot, then we put, we'll send this question specifically to the state rep and the senator and let them decide if we can or we can't. This only asks permission to the city manager to look into it. There's nothing wrong with asking him to try to help the old people. Anybody that's against the old people, there's something wrong with them. Why wouldn't you want to help an old guy?
Counselor Taylor and then Counselor Kelly Garcia.
So, I, I, I think, I think that the counselor has a noble intention of wanting to help our, our elderly folk to try to remain in their homes after retirement and so they don't get, they don't get forced out. So, I don't see any harm in, in asking a question. I think it's good to ask questions. I'm, I'm a little skeptical about what answers might, it might get, but, you know, you, you, you don't get if you don't ask, right? So, so it's good to, it's good to know what we can do. I think that there's lots of folks that, that often get left behind. The elderly are one of them. Veterans are another. And I think that this body ought to try to do what we can to try to help those people. And asking a question doesn't hurt anything. And, 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 you know, I, I, I have no objection to this order at all. I'm going to vote for it.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Sure. Counselor Taylor, you took the words out of my mouth. I wanted to shout out Counselor Recupero, who often is probably misunderstood, but I want to applaud you for always thinking about our elderly folks and our, and our veterans. I was, I transparently don't know enough to vote in favor or against this, but I, I wonder if you would be opposed or if this body would be opposed to moving this topic to the Subcommittee on Aging and Independence, Veterans Affairs and Community Advancement to talk further about this. So, I don't know if that's a motion or perhaps the clerk can clarify on, if I make, if I make a motion to move this to the Veterans Subcommittee to talk about this further.
Motion to move to Subcommittee on Aging and Independence, Veteran Services and Community Advancement? Assuming no objections.
Thank you, Counselor. There are no objections. I think there is a comment or?
I just, I just had a comment regarding the question itself in the order. It says that the city manager create, it doesn't state what he, it says create. And so, I just want us to be careful if we, I mean, if we're looking to create it, it's one time, we go to conference, we're going to be looking to create it to look and see if there's something we can do financially, that's another day. Explore. So, I just wanted to make that con, that, that conscious, you know, statement as we go into the conference.
Okay, so, it, so this is not a motion? This is just a comment?
Yeah, just a comment.
Okay. Counselor Taylor and then Counselor Jimenez and then Counselor Santiget.
Go ahead and take the other.
Counselor Jimenez and then Counselor Santiget.
So, I, I would like to echo what Counselor Brown just said. The order is, says to create a program. So, I just want to make sure that we are not ordering the city manager to create a program if the intent is to look into it. The second thing is, I think that we have an opinion from the city solicitor that, you know, she does not believe that this is legal to move forward. So, I think it is worth us listening to the opinion so that we can be fully informed as we're making this, this decision. I think that regardless of the legality of this or not, we have to really have the conversation around whether this is good policy or not, right? What does this mean for the city's revenue? I understand, wanted to give people a break, right? Like, I, I want to be able to help folks. Is this the best way for us to help them? I don't know. I think it's worth to have a conversation about whether this is the best way to move it forward. So, and I, I don't know if, you know, that there, it makes a difference whether it goes to our, our Committee on Aging or whether it goes to Ways and Means, given that it is a very relevant piece for, for our revenue. But either way, I, if this is something that we want to have a conversation on and when we think that it is legal, I think it should definitely go to Subcommittee. If we don't think it's legal, then I don't think we should send it to Subcommittee because we shouldn't be having conversations about things that we can't do anyway. So, that's all.
Counselor Santiget.
My comments again were about how the order was written as far as the creation of a program because it doesn't sound like that's what you actually wanted. You wanted more to have us investigate. So, as Counselor Brown said, the way the order is written doesn't match what you want.
Counselor Taylor.
So, I don't think that this is really too complicated. The, even, even the way that it's worded, we do not have the power to command the city manager to do anything, okay? This is just an awkward way of requesting that the city manager look into it. So, so I would say this. I, I think, I think both of the, or all the counselors' comments are, are valuable in the fact that I think this does deserve a bigger conversation. I think that if it's, the, the matter's already been referred to Subcommittee and I see no reason why the city manager should not attend that Subcommittee and have the discussion about it. I think that that is a fair thing. Nobody should really object to that and we can all attend, whether we're on the committee or not, and, and discuss what we can do for the elderly. If, if, if this is a, a good proposal or if something better should be done, I think, you know, that is worth a conversation about what is legal, what we are able to do and what we should do.
Thank you, Counselor. Are we moving on? Okay.
Just for the sake of the public, I think we should hear the legal opinion unless it's very long. I, if it's.
We can read, Counselor, through the chair, please. We can read the legal opinion and then move on after the communication is read.
Thank you.
The law department has been asked for an opinion regarding the possibility of the city entering into tax incremental funding, TIF agreements with senior property owners. As we have previously advised, the only property tax abatements or reductions that the city may give to taxpayers are those found in Mass. General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five. Among these are TIF arrangements for the purposes and following the procedures provided in Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-nine, Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Sixty, or Chapter Forty, Section Sixty-A. The purposes and procedures for such TIF arrangements are discussed in the Commonwealth's Division of Local Standards Information Guideline, Release Number nineteen dash twenty-thirteen, a copy of which is provided with this opinion. None of these considerations identified in this guidance appear to apply to your proposal. For these reasons, we do not believe a TIF arrangement may be lawfully used to reduce the tax obligation of a senior taxpayer.
Thank you, Clerk. Before moving on, just noting that it might be good for the chair of this committee to have not just our city manager, our, our city solicitor and any other departments or parties that should be involved. Okay? Thank you.
The last motion on the floor referred to Committee on Aging and Independence.
Counselor.
A point, a point of information, there are two other programs that these seniors are eligible for. And if they go to the assessors' office, they can explain to them what the benefits are and if, it's within certain guidelines, certain income guidelines.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Moving on.
Next item on the agenda, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager provide to the city council a report detailing the following: the number of city-issued vehicles provided to employees, which employees have provided city-issued vehicles, and the cost incurred by the city for vehicle use, gas, and insurance.
Counselor.
Adoption and suspensions and objections? I'd like to talk about it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
I don't know how many we have or what it costs, but I believe maybe we should convert to electric cars so we can cost the lower costs. Since we all want to go green, why don't we change to electric cars? Instead of giving all gas cards, we don't have to give them any gas cards. We just got to give them a plug, to plug it in. And I, I really don't know how, how many cars we have now. I see, I did a few years back, but I think we increased the amount of cars that we have. So, I would like to know how many, all of us, how many cars there is and what is the cost?
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President De Jesus. Whereas the Bar Foundation, a five oh one C-three nonprofit organization dedicated to advancing climate, education, workforce, and artistic work in the greater Boston area, seeks to provide the city with a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant for the North Suffolk Office of Resilience and Sustainability. And whereas the Northeast Office of Resilience.
Madam President, I'd like to waive the rest of the reading and I'd like to move this for a roll call vote for adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving on to roll call votes.
Roll call vote is requested. Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tej.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Santiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia. Absent. And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Order adopted. Final item, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero received late. Any objections to the late order?
Seeing none.
Order introduced by Counselor Recupero, order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference be held with the city manager to discuss the city's policy related to usage of municipal parks by private organizations.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, like to speak on it if it's possible. I'd like to adopt and the suspension, like to speak on it if it's possible.
Seeing no objections. You have the floor.
There's been, a couple of weeks ago, last week, they had an event in a park, and people were complaining and calling me, they were left out. They couldn't go in the park, they were closed. And all the fence was blocked off with blue top. Us cities parks, even if they rent them, other people should still be allowed to go play basketball. They shouldn't be closed completely, and they was closed completely. So, when did the city, even if we rented, when did we become a municipality that likes to rent and make people make money? I was told that you had to pay $10 to get in to go see the sporting event. And I was also told that the prize money was $4,000. And I asked a question when I was there to someone, and I said, how come we can't go in? And you gotta pay. Why do you have to pay in a public park to go? I would like to know why is this happening? Is it happening all over the parks or is it just happening in the soccer field? And how does that operate? How does it work that if somebody rents a soccer field, nobody can see it, nobody can watch it, or nobody can go in the park at all? That is what happened. I got, a lot of people complained. They were closed. You couldn't get in. You couldn't play basketball. You couldn't do anything. You couldn't get in the park. It was all closed. So, I want to know exactly, who rents these parks? How much money do they pay? How much money do they make? And is it the same people? I don't think the city can provide that to us, the same people, because I don't think they know. I've been asking for years, and they don't provide that information. But I would like to have the information, because public parks are public. Anybody should be allowed. And I can't understand why they weren't allowed in that park at that particular time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Madam President.
Counselor Jimenez.
Can I still object to the unanimous referring it to conference? I just, I think that this should go to the appropriate Subcommittee, not to a conference committee. So, I would like to object and take a roll call vote if necessary, but I really think that this should be referred to the Subcommittee on, I forget, Parks and Recreation.
The motion already passed.
That's fine.
But I do encourage us to continue to try to empower our subcommittees that are just as important with the chairs that are representing these issues.
But this is going to Subcommittee?
Yes, already passed.
So, what's the point?
It's a Subcommittee in Conference. It wouldn't be the Subcommittee that takes care of that.
Oh, I understand, but don't everybody wanna know exactly what goes on? Why do you wanna limit it to a couple of people?
Okay, so, moving on to...
Move on to public announcements.
Public announcements. Counselor Robinson.
I'd just like to thank everybody. I'd just like to thank everybody who was involved in the 400. We didn't let the rain bother us. As you could see, there was a lot of Chelsea spirit. People lined up on Broadway. It was unfortunate that we had to cancel the Chelsea Day until Sunday, and actually a lot of people did show up on Sunday. And the benefit, we did have a great night of fireworks. It's probably the first time in the city for fireworks maybe since 1968. All right, so, it's a milestone. I just, once again, the DPW, the Police Department, the Fire Department, everybody that was involved was just outstanding. I just wanted to publicly thank them all for putting in the two days that they did, but also planning out all the events that took place.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanna give a big shout out to the staff, Jen, Counselor Leo Robinson, Cheryl, for the work that they put into it. I know it was a tedious and a long task, but, you know, it was a lot of work and they didn't have a lot of volunteers, but, you know, they stayed focused on the meetings, they stayed focused on the work. Yes, it was very soggy out there, but we did have a fun time. Some of us still have a little cold from the rain, but it was very enjoyable. Yesterday, when I, we saw the fireworks. I just wish there was more people there, and I understand Sunday's a different day from Saturday, and folks had commitment. But I'm just hoping that we won't forget the 400th anniversary of our city, and hopefully, hopefully the city manager will make it up to us next year, and we can have a great day, and we can go out and do it. Not as big, but just to let folks know that we really care. But, I mean, there was a lot of effort put into this one here.
City manager, can we get dibs in getting in front of the parade next year?
Yeah, the DPW, the police, everyone. I mean, you know, it was a, it was a, it was a big monument to climb, but we did go out there, and there was a lot of effort and there was a lot of money spent. So, I think we did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor.
So, I also just wanna quickly just... Quickly, just wanna give my thanks to the 400 Committee for putting it together and everybody that participated, all the businesses, organizations. It was really something to see, and people still came out to watch, even in the rain. And so, I thought that was, I thought that was pretty good. You know, I said to somebody there while we were waiting to go, you know, it's like, you know, what do you want? This is Chelsea, you know? We deal with adversity here. So, I think everybody did a great job. I wanted to also point out that coming up next month is the 37th Annual Chelsea Chamber of Commerce Pot of Gold that's coming up. It's a great event. I encourage everybody to buy a ticket and attend. You have a chance to win $10,000 in the drawing, so I encourage everybody to come out and support our local businesses. They're the fuel that keeps everything running, so, thank you. And that is gonna be on Wednesday, October 23rd at Anthony's of Walden, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Bring your costumes.
All right, seeing no other comments. Are there any moments of silence?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Two, actually. Longtime resident Billy Hill, who passed away last Thursday, and also former mayor Pressman, who was the mayor of Chelsea for a number of years, who passed away recently.
I'll also add our youth in the community who continue to face a lot of violence, gun violence, if we can just have a prayer for all of our youth in Chelsea.
I ask also that you keep my family in prayer. We had two lost in my family this week.